Time.
Sorry, just wait on that one.
At this time, I will ask you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak in the audience or online? All right. Do you know when we will move on to consider our agenda for approval? Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Tom?
Mayor, regarding the consent agenda, I'd like to move item 3.8 to 5.2.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none, a motion would be in order. Tom?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order. Tom?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item under planning is item 4.1 Hunter Hills Phase 3. I'll turn this over to Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. The application is from Tamrac Land Development Company. They're the developer of Hunter Hills with Lenar acting as the builder. They're applying for the third phase of the Hunter Hills development consisting of 130 single-family lots. This is part of the overall 207-acre development that they started last year, located east of County Road 19 and north of 80th Street. The applications included with this request include a zoning map amendment to zone the property to R5 District, a preliminary plat and a planned development conditional use permit regarding lot area and certain flexibilities within those requirements, and then vacation of existing drainage and utilities easements that exist over the existing parcel. The third phase is being platted from what is 120-acre outlot of the overall 207-209-acre property. Comprehensive plan guides this site for low-density residential uses. The zoning is proposed to be R5 District rezoning from A1 District as it exists under the interim land use plan. Surrounding the property, you have cultivated fields basically to the northwest and east of the site. To the south is the earlier additions of Hunter Hills. And then further to the south under 80th Street, you have the Arbor Creek development as well as there's a farmstead to the southeast or southwest of the subject site. The farmstead at the southeast corner of the property, the Burning property, is a registered feedlot which has setback implications for the property. The overall site plan that was presented with the original preliminary plat approval included a number of housing types, provided some diversity. This phase, consistent with the original two additions to Hunter Hills, are all single-family or single-family villa homes within the development. This phase has 112 single-family lots and only the 18 single-family villa lots at the southwest side of the addition. When the original preliminary plat was reviewed, there was an environmental assessment worksheet accompanying the request to look at the potential environmental impacts of the overall development to the city. The council concluded that the project being developed in accordance with state statutes as well as city ordinances and policies had no potential for significant effects and further environmental study wasn't required. Access was a major issue looked at as part of the overall site plan. And with that, the developer was required to provide for upgrading of 80th Street, both within the plat and adjacent to it. The microsurface outside of the plat between County Road 19 and MacIver Avenue has been completed, and they're starting this week on the reconstruction of the section of 80th Street within the plat. As part of this phase of development, no additional requirements are in place. To go any further beyond this preliminary plat, then it would be necessary to connect 85th Street out to County Road 19. So at this time, those discussions are being held. Also, as I noted, there is the 1,000-foot setback from the Burning feedlot buildings that impact the southeast corner of this preliminary plat. Those lots within that 1,000 feet will be platted as an outlot held for future development until the Burning family dairy no longer operates or releases their feedlot registration. One issue that the Planning Commission did discuss, and this came up with the original application, was the zoning ordinance had established setbacks for where farmers can distribute or apply manure adjacent to developments. Mr. Burning was at the public hearing and raised that issue again. He noted that when this requirement was put in place, it was to really address new feedlots coming into the city so that they wouldn't be allowed to operate in proximity to established neighborhoods. This is the reverse situation where the housing is coming in on the developer, on the feedlot itself. And it was also noted that the requirement is over and above what the MPCA establishes. So the consensus of the Planning Commission was really to relook at that requirement and whether it should be applied in this situation or more generally, given that we're not seeing new feedlots coming in. What it is, is growth is happening in accordance with this comprehensive plan that's encroaching upon these feedlots or farm operations. But it really, the burden is on the people buying these lots to understand that they're moving into an area where there's an active farm. And so the farmer shouldn't be penalized for that. So the consensus of the Planning Commission was to either reduce that setback requirement. As Mr. Burning indicated, he would implement good management practices, not apply manure rate on the property line, but provide some setback for that. But the Planning Commission was more of a, let's allow that practice to happen rather than imposing a regulation. So that is something that would come forward at a future point, not being considered as part of this request.
And correct me if I'm wrong, too, the applicant did comment that they would put some literature together for the potential.
Correct. They were going to notify buyers along that plat line that they're adjacent to an active farm.
Okay.
So the preliminary plat itself, 130 lots, as I said, 112 single-family, 18 single-family lots. They're averaging the minimum lot area requirement across all of the lots to be greater than the R5 District requirement, which the city has used in various subdivisions. It provides for more variety in lot shape. It also allows the lots to better fit the natural characteristics of the site where you have wetlands such as exist here. Each of the lots has sufficient area within required setbacks to provide a building envelope within the portfolio that Lenar will have. The streets that were within the project, 60-foot right-of-way, 28-foot wide street, and sidewalk on one side, which is the city's standard template for those. The city engineers review grading and utilities and has their memorandum as part of the packet. Easements would be established at the perimeter of all lots and over any stormwater facilities. There are a number of outlots within the project, either for wetlands, wetland buffers, stormwater basins, and then also the aforementioned lots that will be held for future development, both at the southeast corner and then north of the platted lots up to the future 85th Street right-of-way. Park dedication requirements for the subdivision are to be met as a cash fee in lieu of land because this area is within the park service area for Broderie Meadow Park to the south and also Prairie View Elementary to the east. So the goal of the city would be eventually have trail connection that goes along 80th Street to connect the school, both for students attending school as well as access to that facility. City staff's conclusion is that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, also complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. The Planning Commission did hold their public hearing on June 21st. As I said, Mr. Burning spoke. Representative Tamrec Land was also present to agree with the comments from the staff report and the address questions from the Planning Commission. But there were no significant issues raised as part of the discussion. The public hearing was closed, and the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the applications, as you have outlined in your request for council action this evening.
All right, thank you, Dan. Is the applicant present this evening? Great. Can you come up to the podium? Thank you.
Dan Willenbrandt, Tamrec Land Development, 400 Tanglewood Lane, Marina on St. Croix, Minnesota. We concur with the recommendations from the Planning Commission and the planner and the city engineer, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with the city of Atsigo.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Tom?
Mayor, just a quick question. I was at the Planning Commission hearing just past Monday. You guys are okay with putting literature in your sales literature?
Yes.
We've made that a condition?
Yes.
And I believe that you said that you had put it in Delano's sales literature when you guys were doing a development in Delano.
I'm not familiar with the Delano one, but if Dale said that, then, you know, we will definitely do it on this project here and work closely with Lenar to make sure it meets the intent of the city.
Do you see any issues with Mr. Burning's property if they were to apply newer, closer to the site, especially on the west or the east end of the development?
No.
And I believe Mr. Burning was willing to work with the city in coming up with a change to the ordinance. And if there was any change to the ordinance, you guys would be okay with that as far as limiting that setback?
We'd be addressing that during the final plat, so yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, council, any questions for staff? Other like motion? Tom?
Mayor, a question for Dan. When it comes to an amendment to the current zoning ordinance, I believe it's 300-foot setback currently as far as manure application.
Correct.
So I know there was discussion whether there should be, you know, essentially no setback or whether Mr. Burning was willing to, you know, do something, whether it was 100 feet or something like that. I'm just wondering, not to put the cart before the horse, but what should come first in approving this PUD, COP, or this application?
So Mayor, the application stands as it is right now. The setback would be 300 feet from the east plat line once it's final platted. So the intent would be to bring that amendment forward that the Planning Commission supported to amend the ordinance before the final plat happens.
Okay. Is that something that we can put as a condition to this? If the applicant is willing to actually accept that or?
The city has no limitation on being able to, doesn't matter whether they accept it or not, especially since the setback doesn't apply to them. It applies in the reverse onto the adjacent property.
Correct. And that's what I'm wondering is essentially we're approving this, but it could have an impact on the other landowner.
Which is why we're amending, going to consider an amendment of the ordinance to address that. But there isn't a condition that you would apply to this that is going to affect how that applies to the adjacent property.
Okay.
In essence, I think, you know, if the concern would be that, well, this is approved, and before the final plat is approved, the proposal comes up to amend the zoning ordinance, and suddenly the property owner is opposed to it. But we have the Planning Commission and City Council minutes that reflect their concurrence with the issue of change.
Mayor?
Jeff?
Yeah, I got a question for Dan. When they finish their read with their builds, what type of water softener and, you know, what a type of, I guess, in-house filter, even if that is a setup? I think we talked, I've talked about that with the subcommittee and what Kurt has thought about improving what was done in the house that I was in in '06. Is there a better standard than it was 15 years ago now for what's being put in? Is there anything being put in those houses?
It's essentially up to the, it's a building code issue. So there isn't a requirement in the city code that anyone have a water softener or a filter.
Okay. Thank you.
Private matter. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Councilmember Darkinwell suggested he wanted to add a condition requiring the notification of potential buyers regarding an active farm. Language to that effect would be condition number eight. The developer shall provide notice to the buyer of any lot within 300 feet of the east plat line that the adjacent property is an active feedlot.
Sorry, Jeff, where is that?
What?
What page?
Oh, I added it on page five of the, what would be the draft report. Otherwise, it goes under the findings for the preliminary plat and UDCP.
Thank you.
It would be the very last page. Page two.
And Adra, you have that for the minutes?
Sorry, I'm still trying to locate it. There's too many pages. One, two, three, four, five.
So yeah, if you go to the last page of the packet.
Yep.
Turn back to page two under decision.
Page one, resolution number 202150.
No. The four. The very last. Page three. Take your entire packet.
Yep.
Turn it over.
Yep.
And it says motion seconded by, and flip back one page.
So where it says, this page. It's going to be decision. What page is that? It's going to, from your back, it's going to be.
You're giving the wrong page.
Yeah.
Two, three, four. Four pages in. From the back? Yes, from the back.
So I'm sorry, that should be condition fifteen.
Well, you said, you said eight. Page four. Oh, okay. Item fifteen. So there's 14 listed. Got it. I found it. Yep. Dan, can you reread that again since we have five pages?
So condition 15 would be the developer shall provide notice to the buyer of any lot within 300 feet of the east plat line that the adjacent property is an active feedlot.
Tom?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt, or that's 2021-13, the zoning map. Prove a preliminary plat, PUD, COP, 400 Hill Phase 3, and adopt resolution 202150, vacating existing drainage and utility easements. And just to note that the PUD COP for Hunter Hills Phase 3 would be following the 15 conditions with the addition of item number 15 that Dan had mentioned.
Second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item 4.2 Northern Natural, Northern Natural Gas.
Thank you, Mayor. This application is from Northern Natural Gas, requesting approval of a conditional use permit to relocate a valve facility that they maintain as part of their high-pressure gas line that trend versus Atsigo from the Mississippi River through to, towards St. Michael, just adjacent to Rice Lake. The request is processed as a conditional use permit. Essentially, what happens is statute sets up that the city must allow for these types of facilities because they're incidental to delivery of services related, obviously, to natural gas in this case that supports not only local development but also regional development as well. So the ability for the city to review and process those is made subject to those criteria in the zoning ordinance. What they're doing is replacing their existing facility, which is on a small parcel adjacent to Trunk Highway 101. It's located between a city-owned outlot and an outlot within the Riverbend South development. That property within Riverbend South is where they're proposing to locate the facility at its northeast corner. Comprehensive plan guides that property for commercial uses in its own B3 district. At the time, that was established when Quick Trip was constructed, which is located, obviously, to the east. North of the site is the wetland that exists owned by the city. Further to the north is Riverbend Mobile Home Park. And then further east of Quick Trip is the Wildflower Meadows Development. So the site is essentially being put onto the outlot that would be developed at some point in the future with the commercial land use. The lot itself meets all the requirements for the B3 district and the structures that they're proposing provide for this relocated facility. Meet all the setback requirements. They are proposing a fence surrounding the site, which by the zoning ordinance can be up to eight feet high. They can put the barbed wire security arms on it provided they're over seven feet above grade. Because this is a commercial zoning district, the fence will need to be black vinyl coated so that it's not as industrial-looking. The zoning ordinance would require that there be landscaping installed, however lacking grading of the balance of the site as well as installation of irrigation to ensure survivability. That will essentially make it a condition of approval that it be screened when the outlot is developed so that that's part of the overall site improvement for that location when that development does occur. The grading plan is preliminary at this point. The city engineer is working with Northern Natural Gas to review that. There is no connection to city utility in terms of sewer and watering services. The access to the site is existing. There's an existing driveway off 72nd Street. It's a gravel surface that goes back to the existing location. What they're showing on their site plan is essentially teeing off of that to go to this facility. City staff's recommending the existing driveway to the north line of the city property as well as the tee over to the substation would be paved as required by the zoning ordinance. Obviously, that'll stop any gravel from being dragged out on the trail to nice dust and erosion, and that complies with the zoning ordinance. Other minor issues are just looking at any lighting that would be installed on the site has to meet the city's requirements for shoebox style, the horizontal cutoff, and prohibition on any signage on the property. Building that they have for, enclosing the facility is shown to be a metal structure with a pitched roof. The city has used a prefabricated masonry-type building for its utility structures, both the high-pressure valve station that's on the west side of 101 near this facility or the well that was recently constructed at Atsigo Elementary. It's a better-looking structure that's going to fit better with the character of the area as it develops with commercial uses. So we are recommending that as a condition of approval being required of this site as well. City staff recommends approval of the application based on the requirements of the zoning ordinance as an essential service facility. Planning Commission held their public hearing to consider the request on June 21st. There were no public comments. There was the need for one member of the Planning Commission to recuse himself from discussion as their firm participated in the preparation of these plans, but the balance of the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval. You have findings in fact with conditions to implement or effect that decision as part of your request for council action.
Thank you, Dan. Is the applicant present?
Believe there are more.
Good evening. This is Stephen Martinez with Northern Natural Gas and the senior right-of-way manager here for Northern Natural Gas. We reside in Mendota Heights. Our official address is 1120 Center Point Drive, Suite 400.
Thank you. All right, council questions for the applicant or for staff? Tom?
Mayor, just before I did attend the public hearing and Mr. Martinez did comment, Mr. Martinez said that there were safety concerns as one of the reasons or the primary reason for moving. I would note that the council had talked about this previously, I think, before this application was made. But given that my family owns this piece of property, I will be recusing myself. At the same time, it appears that they will be maintaining the same facility with having the other, with having another location in Center Point would be operating the other facility. So as to why there is two facilities, I'm sure the applicant or Dan can speak to that. But other than that, I'll be recusing myself from making a decision on this.
Okay. Adra, you have that noted? Dan or the applicant?
Mr. Martinez can address the safety issue, but Northern Natural Gas did approach the city about locating this facility on its property, basically to the east of this location. And that was brought to the administrative subcommittee. The administrative subcommittee said the city wasn't interested in having that on its property. Staff concurred with that recommendation for practical reasons, including access to the property and the potential, you know, loss of the city open space within that site. So after the city's decision, then Northern Natural Gas approached the adjacent landowner, Darkinwell Real Estate, regarding locating on a portion of their property. So what they're proposing here is basically to locate the site on Outlet C, Riverbend South, by Eastbent, maintaining the balance of the property for future commercial development.
Okay.
Mr. Martinez can address why they're pursuing the request.
Yes.
Yeah. So our planning department received a request back in the earlier part of the year and then also last year to secure funding for relocation of the facility due to the high-speed traffic on Highway 101. We had primary concerns of automobile accidents that could occur in the area and create a further public hazard. So we wanted to relocate the facility away from the highway as far as possible, yet still near our facilities to be able to operate is why this site along 72nd Street Northeast was chosen. So the primary reason for the relocation for this particular area was due to the speed and potential factors that could come into play with automobiles along Highway 101.
Okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's helpful, too, for the council to understand that there's two gas lines that go through this area. They're large-capacity trunk lines. They're also under very high pressure. So these are the same lines that go through the outlots back through Wildflower Meadows that it's basically a no-disturb zone where you can't put any structures in there, can't do any excavation, can't plant any trees to keep any potential impacts of those gas lines as far away as possible.
Mr. Martinez, if one was hit, which is your concern with 101, if there was an accident, would, I mean, obviously, that would be an explosion. But is it, is the fact that the second location, which is located very closely, would be able to then turn down the gas and stop further explosions? Or I guess I just want to know that they're very close to each other. I could see the new proposed site making more sense, but you're keeping the existing facility, you said.
Yeah, so I wouldn't necessarily use the word explosion. However, I would say that we are relocating the facility. What would remain at the existing facility, we would still own the facility. It would be reduced to a 15-by-15 footprint primarily because Center Point Energy still needs to operate their valve setting that they have there. They're not relocating that valve setting. So that would have safety bullards or what we would call guard rails installed around the 15-by-15 area. Not as big of a concern because Center Point operates at a different pressure than we do. So this would be relocated over, there is not the, the ability for, while a vehicle could come off of the interstate or of Highway 101 and come over to the new proposed facility, there's not as great a risk as it is to where the current facility is.
That's quite, it's, the topography is very high there, right? Or it goes high and then it would.
The existing facility is at a much lower elevation than the proposed.
Okay.
And you can see on the grading plan, they are grading that site down a little bit to fit this onto that corner of the property.
And if I may, we did work with the developer who owns the lot for the approval of the grading plan, and we still are working with the city for approval. We want to ensure that our impacts are minimal. So that's one of the reasons we worked with the owner of the property to ensure that the grading plan would meet his future needs as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Jeff?
Just to be clear, to make sure I'm understanding. Just to be clear, to make sure I'm understanding the language. So when it says a public hearing was closed and the planning commission voted six and now or six to zero, everything went through. But then the one abstaining means that was what Dan was talking about, but he refused himself.
Yes, because his firm that he works for, sounds like he did some engineering for it.
Commission member works for, they prepared these grading plans. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll make a motion. Motion to approve a conditional use permit for Northern Gas or excuse me, Northern Natural Gas to locate an essential service facility upon Outlet C River Bend South.
A second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. With Tom, yes. Yes, I had already noted that to Audra. Motion passes four to zero. Tom recuse himself. All right. Moving on to item six, which is city council reports and updates. We have got our first item on there is well, it's actually item five, but six went ahead of it. So who made the mistake? Adam was like, wait, numbers are all right.
When I saw six, I was like five point two.
All right, item five point one is city council reports and updates, and we are on commission updates. First is Heritage Preservation Commission. Brittany.
Madam Mayor, I don't have very much. We're just getting ready for Prairie Festival. All right.
Perfect. Next item is Park and Rec Commission update. We were able to do the ribbon cutting out at the pickleball courts just right out here. It was well attended from many of the residents that were here when they requested this go in a few years ago. So we did a ribbon cutting out there. It was the same night as the opening of the farmer's market. And then inside here that evening, we had HKGI working with us, looking at our pieces of our master plan, our park's master plan. So they will be kind of gathering more information on that. It's more about we're looking at the baseball fields up updates to this park and then also the waterways. So looking at improvements on Nashwa and then also over at Carick's Landing. And then also last week, we did the ribbon cutting for the Carick's Landing, the bridge. So Adam, that is update. That was really exciting. Richard LaFave, which Richard's family owned the property, Richard did the ribbon cutting. So it seemed very fitting and his family was there. Guardian Angels was super excited. So it was a fun little event. Lots of people were excited to be outside and like we says, our first kind of ribbon outside event with that and the pickleball that we could do since COVID. So exciting things happening and the park's been hopping. So you know, T-bells going off, soccer. It was great. So. Next item is planning commission. Tom?
So the Hundred Hills, Phase Three and NNG River Bend South, we did that tonight. There was also the WNG Parkview Retail second, which was essentially the Seago Dental. Dunkin' Donuts portion next to Auburn's that there was a CFP that was moved by planning commission. What's the next step in that?
Mayor, that will come to the council meeting on July twelfth. There's the need for the city attorney to draft a site improvement performance agreement. So that takes a little additional time to get done after planning commission.
All right, next is public safety.
Oh, I
Sorry, Tom, got more.
Say they, I believe it was Commissioner Thompson that one of the two scenes signed taking down and removed.
Mayor, we followed up the Wright County right away. Well, Kevin and I identified there were two signs out there for the former Timmepie. So the county will take those down.
That's all right. Public safety, Tina?
No meeting, not until August. I was gonna say next month, but August. So no updates.
All right. Tom requested item three point eight to be moved to item five point two.
Ron, I don't know if this would be a question for you, but it said the commit to change orders account to a net deduction of twenty eight thousand five thirty five. Just kind of as I was looking through the numbers here. I was looking at what I would assume would be item number F, the C plus D plus T at the very end, page seven of seven. Would that be considered F? Because when you look at balance to finish, it's B minus F.
For which which project are you speaking?
Three point eight.
Yeah, that's handled by AE two S. That's handled by the sanitary sewer facilities engineer, which is AE two S.
Yeah.
So I I don't review those.
Can you can you clarify your question, Tom?
So on the back, on page seven and seven. It's balanced to finish B minus F.
Yep.
And it has the number at the bottom, four hundred eighty four thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars seven six cents.
Correct.
I'm just wondering what's F because I see percentage and it has F underlined ninety six point five four at the very bottom. It has B, C, D, E, but no other F.
Yeah, I can see the percentage column is labeled as as F. The four hundred eighty four thousand is accurate.
Then just my other question was the commit to change orders account to a net deduction. So we've we've cut twenty eight thousand.
Off the original contract bid price, correct?
Just essentially my two questions. So maybe you could ask AE two S what the B minus F.
I will have them correct future
columns.
Pay application.
Yeah. Okay, if Tom's got his question answered, we do need a motion to approve this. Yes, Tom.
I'll make motion to approve the application number fourteen in the amount of five hundred forty two thousand two hundred and seventy six dollars sixty one cents to race like construction group or what completed on the East Ways Water Facility by a solid project.
My second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we are still under the city council reports and update section. Does anyone have anything? Tom?
Mayor, well, maybe Ron, you'll be bringing this up, but how's thirty nine going? I, you know, on the way into town today, I noticed that the first lift is is on. So I expect the second lift they were going to do continuous so that they would get the project completed. Then the striping and signs have to go in. As far as I know, they're still on track for the July fifteen.
That will be very nice. Anyone else for city council reports and updates? All right, we will move on to item six then, which is staff reports and updates.
Thank you, Mayor. This one item, this reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday.
Perfect. Audra?
I have no updates. Thank you.
All right, your attorney.
Thank you. I have no updates, but thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. It's nice to be here and to see your facility as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ron?
The microsurface project was completed last week. I think most of you have probably seen some streets that have been micro surfaced and they turned out pretty well included as Dan stated, Eightieth Street, the two ends of that between where the developers actually going to be reconstructing that section. And that street is now closed. They did have some signs up warning the residents prior to it being closed. I think they went up on Thursday. So on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, those signs were up and then it was closed today and started doing the reclaiming to remove that pavement in that section. And they'll be putting in the sanitary sewer, the water main. Some storms were replacing the curb and gutter and a wider section for parking on the north side. And as Dan stated, the trail also will go in at that time. We also were awarded a grant. If you remember back in January, we talked about the flashing lefts on trunk highway one oh one at all county state highways.
Yes.
We were notified today that we got that money. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Mendot. Plus the county will put in their share and then the city of Osigo has to put in a portion along with city of St. Michael, a small portion of their city involved in it also. So I don't know, you know, like we said, we just found out today, I let you know.
That's exciting.
It's nice that otherwise this project wouldn't have occurred because it's not a Mendot priority, although it is a city and county priority.
Absolutely. Nice. That's exciting. Do you and I know you just rewarded it. So there's still more to come, but do they anticipate that it would be installed this summer still?
I would think would be installed before winter.
Okay.
It's not something I think they need to do a lot of design work. If if the supplies are there, that's always kind of
So this would be at thirty six, thirty eight, forty two and thirty nine then?
Yes, all four county state.
Great.
I think Ron would like to put in the caveat that it is Mendot is there for no promises. It's being run by will turn the design over to the county and then they have their get their approvals. Contractors that do that type of work.
Do you have an idea of what our share?
Yes, it was estimated at ninety thousand, out of three hundred and sixty thousand.
Mayor, just a note of clarification, not to step on Ron's toes, but the letter outlines that the work cannot commence until after July first, twenty twenty three is when they're funding is when they're funding. To be like, yeah, we'll get it done this year. I'm like, I just wanted to correct that.
Might be.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks a lot.
So people will just still be taking it for the next year without seeing.
It was like the last, it took like five years for them to turn back land. So.
Right. But estimated ninety thousand, we need to start playing.
Yes, we can set that aside in the future budget.
Okay.
Let's put it in twenty fifteen or twenty twenty five.
All right.
Go back to like nineteen ninety five, I wish.
Dan.
Mayor, no planning commission meeting on Tuesday, July sixth. The next one would be on Monday, July nineteenth. The applications include the two outlets south of Market Farms, north of Seventieth Street, proposed for single family lots with Tammerack Land doing the development, Dr. Horton as builder. In advance of the public hearing of planning commission, we're going to have the developer hosting a neighborhood meeting on July eighth. They should have sent out all of the notices to the residents adjacent to the project within three hundred and fifty feet on Friday. So they'll receive those this week. And then the other application is a comprehensive plan amendment to change land guided from industrial to residential west of Nineteenth South of Eightieth Street.
All right. Sergeant Jason Altman.
We've been writing quite a bit. Got a couple of things going on. So I've been trying to look up state statutes on a case that we have going on all at the same time. So three quick little things. One, we have a new canine, not only officer, but an actual canine dog. It's canine. His name is Canine Grizz. He's currently assigned to Deputy Michael Loomis, who's never been a canine handler before. He's actually, I think his first public appearance is actually going to be at Prairie Park here tomorrow. So that'll be cool. I think he's a little bit nervous having to actually be in the public spotlight. Not used to everyone paying attention. And so I think he's a little nervous. So yeah, that's very positive. The dog is.
Why are you talking about?
So that'll be going on tomorrow. I think ten o'clock Prairie Park. Something I'll have to mention to that particular deputies. I said, what kind of event is it? He goes, I don't know, because I gotta show up. So I'll be looking and sending him this thing that I kind of look like an idiot in front of the podium, not knowing what the event is, but let him know.
It's it's outside. It's the free entertainment for kids.
Perfect.
It was like coming like education for how to be safe out of, you know, you know.
Yeah, so just kind of funny when I sit sitting there trying to get an update on what's the event? Can I update anybody on this sort of thing? Oh, no. I'm like, okay, well, that's something that we kind of need to know, I guess, when you're out about. So I'm going to give him brief about having me stand up here and go, I don't know. So I did apply for a few grants today through the towards the ODS initiative. That's traffic enforcement through the federal and state government. Actually, one thing that I had brought up three meetings ago about pedestrian traffic, apparently they only do grants now. This is a change that we just received. Only do grants for pedestrian or crosswalk enforcement for Ramsey and Hennepin Counties now. So it used to be a statewide thing. They limited it to two counties now for whatever reason.
Where those counties have sidewalks in front of everything.
They
Just throwing it out there.
Wright County is above average in the amount of pedestrian pedestrian related traffic deaths. Much like any of the other categories, we are above average in speed deaths. We are above average in DUI deaths. We are above average distracted driving deaths. So all those get factored into the grants. So well frustrating that we can't have part of that, but.
Who makes those decisions?
Kind of a collaborative decision making process through all these different entities. I think that they know that was it NHIST or different groups across the entire country, I think, is all plugging this money into the T Z D thing. So like, there's a lot of different people that have a say whether or not some of those grant stuff goes through. We've been lucky that we have had a ton of different grant shifts that have granted to us over the years, especially for like DUI enforcement and such. I will see where that shakes out. Kind of the final thing, just a kind of philosophical thing. I've been trying to embrace the social media side of things for a while here. Kind of coinciding with Elbeville Friendly City Days, we kind of had a weird incident that happened that technically wasn't on Seago. But when I was working where social media kind of creates a lot of misinformation slash buzz, depending on how you want to, you know, phrase it. And all of a sudden, it's midnight, one o'clock in the morning and the misinformation gets spread really quickly and I kind of have to try to put the fire out. But at the same time, recognizing that there's a lot of potential witnesses, but that, you know, in in some of these comments. And so I'm kind of keeping track. And so the last time something kind of blew up on one of the Facebook groups, I said, well, apparently this person knows more than I do. I'm going to give him a call. And actually kind of ended up being a little bit fruitful to kind of expedite the process and kind of solving an issue. On this particular case, there is a kind of a rumor that there may be a missing child somewhere. And I was already working on it, but then all of a sudden the information starts going through and I'm like, oh, my God, apparently this is much larger than I initially had thought for the information that we'd received. We hadn't gotten any information basically. So basically started going down the list of, well, this person knows more than I do apparently. And I started calling people that were commenting about their thoughts and beliefs and.
The child was looking to get home because his phone was broke.
Essentially, and so I it took me a while because it literally had nothing to go off of other than there may be a missing child and go. You know, it's really difficult in that particular moment of I don't have anybody actually reporting a missing child. I don't have anywhere to go, but there's enough information out there and all the different our computer and calls and nine one one calls that eventually, eventually I figured it out. You know, waking somebody up at two o'clock in the morning, hey, is your child home? Yes. Okay, there we go. We can confirm it. And actually was very thankful for some of the people that were reaching out to me. They will come out and start a search party. I'm like, well, I don't have anybody to search for at this point. However, they're really good about they had documented some of the things by screenshots, et cetera, on and actually ended up being one of the biggest resources I had. So I could literally take the screenshot of what the initial post was and walk up to mom, hey, is this your child? Yes. Okay, great. Because I had no idea who we were looking for. So that ended up working out. So some of the people that were concerned. That were concerned about it, I'm glad they, you know, took the time to research it themselves and be available for a phone call from a cop at two o'clock in the morning and pounding up people's doors. So kind of into working out, like I said, it's, it's philosophical, philosophical thing, because as anybody in government knows, a lot of times we're kind of. Playing damage control because it's typically, uh, you know, information being spread about, well, we did things incorrectly and people are venting, which that's part of the process. Um, but recognizing maybe I can really step into it and be a little more proactive rather than just kind of reading it, rolling my eyes and getting frustrated with it. Making a change. So it's kind of interesting. That's what I have.
Perfect. Any, uh, firework issues of late?
Yes. Yes, we've had a few.
There was a good post that was out, just, you know, reminding people just about being so dry. So.
And that's, it's the big thing. It's insanely dry. So.
Well, I'm sure you'll be very busy this weekend.
I'm going to guess you're right.
Throw it out there. Hopefully they're all sparklers.
Right.
Yeah. All right, uh, seeing nothing else on our agenda, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
And we will resume our special meeting.
Have a good July fourth week, everybody.
Okay. Yeah.
Audrey, do you want us to do anything with these?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I don't think we can just leave it until this is recorded, probably. For my minutes.
Okay. Yeah.
How many talks am I to check again?
Audrey's ready. All right, I will make a motion to reopen the special meeting. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Tom. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is reopened. We are moving on to item two. Adam.
All right. So. In your packet, you have a bunch of information.
Yep.
Um, and I'm going to start off with the big eleven by seventeen. There you go.
What page?
Page number one. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, so this is pavement management funded by property taxes, which is what I'm going to be talking to you about tonight. So for twenty twenty-two, the levy is one point one million dollars. Um, if I'm looking at the cash balance on the bottom of the page. You can see it's all green. Most of it's in excess of two hundred percent. What that gives is the city a lot of flexibility to move projects up from one year to the next or to continue on the path of doing a project, even if it comes in over budget. And so, uh, the fund is very healthy as it sits right now. Um, there's no debt projected throughout the life of this ten years, so which means you're funding these projects as you go. You're not having to issue bonds to pay for street maintenance or street reconstruction projects, which saves on interest, uh, which is favorable. And then lastly, uh, we'll get to it here in a little bit, but I want to highlight the, the difference. In how the city's currently funding pavement management versus, uh, the, the franchise fee model, which I'll get to a little bit later. Is there any questions on pavement management? I guess if I summed it all up, the levy is one point one million and it's doing very well.
Hey, just a quick, uh, uh, question. The percentages at the top, that's the increase year over year.
In the levy, correct.
Okay, yep, that's correct. So heading into twenty twenty-two, it would be four point seven six percent.
Uh, the next page is Trail Management. So as of right now, the property tax levy for twenty twenty-two is forty-three thousand dollars, up seven and a half percent from the current year. If we look at the twenty twenty-one column, we see the two hundred and forty-six thousand, which is projects taking place this year. Uh, those projects came in over budget, uh, as approved at the last meeting due to some ADA additional ramps. So that is going to throw this fund into a, a deficit of thirty-four thousand. There's a blue square, which I'm recommending a transfer in to kind of make up for that short-term deficit. Uh, staff has been discussing trails and the maintenance number of thirty-four thousand is going to more than likely need to be around forty thousand. And if we're looking out into future years, based on what we saw this year, those trail renewal projects are much more expensive than we anticipated. And so we have one identified in twenty twenty-five, uh, which I believe is section of eighty-fifth street. Um, and we know that ninety thousand number is not going to do what we need it to do. And so when we get to actually looking at the CIP later this fall. The council is going to have to make some decisions, whether to continue at this funding level or to increase that levy to bring it up to standards that you want to see for trail maintenance and renewals.
But we can do a transfer in of our excess money of the.
You, you can make the small transfer in here, which I'll outline here in a few more minutes, but that's not sustainable.
Right.
If, if that's the standard that you want to set for the trails, then the funding will, that tax levy needs to be increased. All for twenty twenty-two and heading into the future.
So immediate term, obviously we have to sit there and put some money into there so we don't have a negative.
Correct.
Fun balance.
That, that needs to be done for year end. So we'll, we'll do that before year.
And we do have excess funds this year, so we can make the transfer.
Correct. Yep, that, that transfer, and that's later on in the agenda, but, you know, I'd recommend probably eighty thousand. You know, that's the low point of the current financing model. I think we're going to increase some costs in there, but we're also going to increase the levy and offset some of that, so.
Okay.
It's an area that needs a better plan in place.
Well, and in fairness, I mean, like when we did the transfer in last year, it, we didn't really. These started to go bad very fast and, and planning, we hadn't planned properly for them, so.
It was just, uh, the first time you're developing a CIP for trail renewals.
Yep.
Well, we missed the ADA ramps.
Right.
Did that. And so now we just know that those future projects are going to be harder than this already.
Sure.
So this is one, you'll see a different tax levy number by the time we get to September. Uh, the next page is parts equipment. Uh, the twenty twenty-two levy is sixty-four thousand, uh, three point two three percent over the current year levy. Uh, the cash balance is, is looking healthy. Um, there's a lot of. Time in between some of these projects, so there's, there's good planning that can take place. Uh, the projects scheduled in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three are, uh, I would say somewhat not yet defined. They're classified as full park playground replacements, which, uh, you know, the, this park staff will have to do some evaluation and identify certain components of those playgrounds that may need to be replaced. But the project could stop there or it could be more supplemental to a specific playground and that might fall back onto the park recognition. Make some recommendations to the council. So I would say those projects are, uh, funded, but maybe not yet defined as to what scope they'll actually be. So those numbers of two hundred and thirty-nine or four hundred and eighty-five thousand may not be nearly that significant when the time.
I'm sure we'll see a different breakdown, but what park, do you know what parks those are listed as?
I believe the first twenty twenty-two.
In the first park we built was School Mall.
The first two that were coming up were School Mall and Prairie Park.
Yes, then that would make sense. Those were our first two builds. Okay.
Any questions on parts equipment? Next fund is capital equipment, so this counts for all vehicle purchases, uh, except for the utility department. They, all those purchases go through here, but they fund that directly into this fund also. So, uh, whether that's a tractor, a snowplow, or a pickup truck, or a mower, they all come out of this fund. And so the levy for twenty twenty-two is at three hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, the fleet CIP, I would say in the near term is built out better than on the back end. Uh, it's hard to project that far into the future, maybe some of the additions or equipment that we know about. Uh, so you'll kind of see some of those expenses drop off a little bit on the back end, and that's why I brought that up. Just, um, looks like there's some big cash balances there at the end, but I think it's in a really good spot. Uh, gives the city more flexibility to order equipment earlier and pay for it, uh, in the budget year. So it just provides a lot of flexibility to have some cash on hand in the, the first couple of years. You can see that that isn't quite there. But as we go up, uh, the funding for this source, uh, we're getting to the point where we want to be. So I would probably make the recommendation to stay on this track here for now.
That six hundred and forty-eight thousand in twenty twenty-six under utility fund contribution, what? Forget what, uh, why we put that number in there for.
That is more than likely, or a big chunk of it is more than likely the backdrop.
Okay.
Which is a very expensive piece of equipment, probably four to five hundred thousand dollar piece.
This is in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's what makes sense by there's funding seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand that year.
Right, so in, in that year, most of.
So they're giving it utilities is giving them.
Yep. Any questions? All right, next we have fire reserve, somewhat related to our discussion, uh, for the first item. The levy for twenty twenty-two is two hundred thousand dollars. The council has just been increasing this incrementally over time and, and that's where you're at right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I highlighted the blue cell there, the, the twenty thousand dollar. I have no idea what that number is going to be. I can't give you, uh, a number. The contract did not include a, not to exceed.
Right.
So it's an hourly rate, but I can tell you it's probably going to be that much by the time you're all said and done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the RCA did identify this as the funding source. So Tom, you were asking questions earlier about the budget. Um, when the council approved the contract at the last meeting, this was identified as the funding source for that.
Okay.
And then, you know, just always highlighting the disclaimer, this timing is just for illustration only to give the council an idea as to what. Now, if you're talking about building a station, that's six million plus. And the equipment, depending on what you build, is going to be one to three million dollars pretty easily.
Right.
So on a, a five point five million dollar bond, the debt service on that is about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So again, just illustrate it, but we'll get into more evaluation, uh, with Jerry on that, and the numbers may go up, may go down.
He, he's just kind of just throwing out some numbers, but these are not concrete.
Sure. No, these, this is just, if the city issued five and a half million dollars debt, repaid it over fifteen years to build a station and buy fire equipment. That would run about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year.
So around the right. Yep, yeah.
And then Adam, does that go along with the comments you have, uh, sell the excess property, oh, enough excess property, nevermind.
Yeah, so upon, in the last two years, you know, I certainly hope that the city sells that property before twenty thirty, but, uh, you can see the. You know, one point one million dollars coming back to this fund, uh, if the city decided to sell off that excess land.
Which is why I asked that question, Jerry, when he's like, oh, twenty acres. It's like, well.
Yeah.
I don't think we need twenty acres, but we do plan to sell off some property back because we need to recoup money. We paid top dollar for that.
But the longer we wait, the more top dollar comes out.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely, but nobody, we did have it for sale and nobody bought it.
Yeah.
So.
But that was because there's no utilities.
There's no utilities. We need Henry Hansen to get going.
All right, so last one, well, I shouldn't say that. Second to last one of this packet is the capital improvement fund. Uh, so this is kind of our catch-all, uh, flexibility fund. Last year, the council, uh, levied six hundred and sixty-one thousand that went into this fund as kind of a tax rate management tool. Uh, haven't necessarily put a number in there yet for twenty-two, other than the tax abatement number, which is a couple lines down. So this is the tax abatement for the Parkview Retail Project. So the city will be levying forty thousand dollars to repay this fund for that, um. Improvements that we did on eighty-eighth street, Parkview. And the forty thousand ties directly to the taxes generated off the Coburns and the apartment building project. So this number will fluctuate every year until that project is paid back in full. Does that make sense to everybody? Uh, mostly the CIP is built on county road projects. Uh, it's nice to have the flexibility so that we can do a project like the Parkview Retail Project when they come up. And be able to shift funds around. It's very good for our bond rating to have some unassigned unrestricted cash balance, um, on our books. Um. Ultimately, the fund balance transfer per the policy comes into this fund, which is the significant amount, which we'll review in a little bit. Uh, so there'll be some funds coming into this account regardless of whether you levy any additional taxes for it.
Adam, with the street lights or our, our blinking lefts, where would, where are you planning?
That's probably a project that will come out of this fund.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
At least staff would make that recommendation.
Okay. Good spot for it.
That, so that ninety thousand would probably come out of here. Yeah, it's not currently included, but that would be my recommendation.
Because we're going to have a big chance. Yeah.
There, there really isn't unless you do it out of pavement management, which I think this is a better spot.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's roadway stuff and safety, you know, that's how we plugged it in before, so.
Yep. And then our last one is the, uh, city buildings and property maintenance. Uh, so the levy going into next year is thirty thousand dollars. Um, with the world report, we have some other maintenance type things to help build out the CIP that we're going to add in. I don't think that they'll be significant to the point where we need to change the funding model, but just to let you know, we'll be working on adding those into this. Um, this cash flow as well, uh, all things considered, it's doing well. It's got a, a decent, small little cash balance that comes up with any emergency reserves, um, or to address the projects that we have budgeted for. So those were the seven funds that either had a capital improvement plan budget or a capital. So those were the seven funds that either had a capital improvement plan budget or a capital improvement plan. When we get to the last sheet, I'll kind of show you that, how it looks in summary. So next, I want to transition back to pavement management, but highlight some franchise fee information. So I had Ellers do some projecting for us. I'd done my own in the past, but I wanted some more in-depth analysis and actually take a look at it. And so they've, they've broken it down by each of the different providers, um, all the different customer accounts, annual billing, average bill. And laid this all out, and and all I really want to touch on right now is the the bottom line down here. Is that based on the model that they use, there would be seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars funding in twenty twenty-two, should the council go forward with that. So you can see the the breakdown between residential and commercial mostly mirrors the, uh, uh, tax-based allocation as well. So there's some fine tuning that you might be able to do to get that to more closely aligned. But at this point, the commercial projects would be paying a slightly larger share than they would based on their tax-based value. So. Let's say yellow, just. The the yellow is, I guess, I would call it an estimate. So when there's less than a, uh, specific number of accounts in each of these kind of classes, the utility companies don't need to provide detailed information for them. So they're providing us an aggregate number of something there, and we're estimating the rest of it based off of that.
Okay, so the yellow, the reason why that's kind of carved out from the rest is just to signify that it's more of an estimate than it is.
Correct. Center Point wouldn't give us as much detail as what you see in some of the other ones above. And so Nick said that some of them were willing to at least give him some more information, but in this, those two specific categories, Center Point wasn't willing to give us the breakdown that we were looking for. They gave us totals, so like if you look at the annual billing, the three eighty-eight and three seventy-two, they gave us that number in total. Nick just broke it down somewhat between those two categories.
So when you're looking at the subtotals at the bottom, and you're doing combined electric of eight thousand four hundred and twelve and Center Point at seven thousand eighty-eight, and you're doing these annual fee revenue estimates for residential and commercial, that's based on, uh, I I guess that's six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six thirty-two hundred.
So this is the rate schedule that he used to, uh, come up with that.
Yeah.
And so it's four dollars residential on both electric and gas. And that's exactly what Elk River and Rogers do. And then, uh, small, commercial, medium, and large commercial. And I'm breaking those out.
What are they considered, like, small, commercial?
Uh, small commercial would be, they they base it on demand.
Okay.
Or or usage, so.
Some people over in those, like the strip mall or.
Yeah, a strip mall would be small commercial.
Okay.
But somebody that is using a huge supply of gas, uh, or electric, they have certain size lines that come into their buildings, they have different sized meters, and so they can distinguish these customers by those meter types basically.
So assuming maybe target is a large commercial?
Probably for electricity, but maybe not for gas.
Not for gas. On, so on the franchise fee page, it says like customer privacy. I'm assuming that's something that he was unable to get on the next sheet.
Yep, there's, there's certain categories here.
Okay, yeah, under Excel in Wright-Enpen.
But Center Point was the one that he just couldn't get enough information to break it down better.
Okay.
So, you know, if you're looking at the annual revenue, that eleven thousand plus thirty-three thousand, I would feel pretty good about. It's more on the analysis side, what's the impact, what's their average bill? So, and again, I I plan on bringing Nick back in the future, talk you through this, but I wanted to get some feedback on it before I bring it out here. And then the the next page is more of a impact analysis. And so what I'd like to point out is this break even. So on a three hundred and three thousand dollar valued home in the city of Oatsygo, if we had to levy that additional seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand that we're talking about generating.
Yep.
That would be a ninety-six dollar impact to their tax level. And so we made a purpose, that's the value that it comes out to, but that ninety-six dollars is the same that they're paying in the franchise fee. So, um, what I'm doing now is I've gathered information from Wright County to show where the actual tiers are of value, and then you can see where that break even point is in the city. But the city's, um, you know, median residential value for twenty twenty-one is median appraised value is two hundred and ninety thousand. So you're really talking about the median value home in the city that is the break even point in comparing a tax levy model versus a franchise model.
Okay.
So it is somewhat regressive in the fact that lower valued properties end up paying a little bit more on the, um, franchise fee model compared to a tax levy, but then it's vice versa for, you know, starting anywhere over three hundred and three thousand. And then the the commercial, you know, it seems like a lot when you're talking about a total monthly bill of a hundred and fifty-five dollars, but you can see, uh, that it's a extremely advantageous system for them as well. There's probably room to bring that fee schedule up a little bit for some of those, but to the point where you don't want to discourage development.
Right.
No, I forget when, uh, the regarding the franchise fee, when you're putting, uh, four dollars for electric and four dollars for gas, is it? Forget if it's a, a kind of a sliding scale or a usage type scale, so if you're using more electric or more gas, can charge more or not?
No, it's it's a flat. It is a fixed flat fee. Just like, so it's not like. Cable TV does the percentage, man, so I'm talking about your water.
Don't get me started. I already said that.
Okay, so I I I get the ninety-six dollars. So when the annual franchise fee of ninety-six dollars for a residential home, they get the break even portion. Uh, but when you're putting the six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two, that's adding both gas and electric for all the residential and gas and electric for all the commercial to come up with that seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Correct, and that, and one thing I'll show you on the cash flow sheet, which we'll go to next, I'm watching the storm roll, and it's getting really dark. Yep, um, that revenue source is gonna grow, so that's seven eighty-seven next year. And it's probably already higher than that based on you're putting three, four hundred units out there a year.
Right.
Uh, Dunkin' Donuts, and you're adding Michael's, and you're adding Coburns. All of that just continues to to grow, and so that that revenue source will escalate into the future. And I know the one thing that we had talked about in the past, and I forgot where, uh, we landed up on, is whether we, uh, did more of kind of the electric side of things and putting, uh, the bulk there versus doing it electric and gas. I know it's been a while since we talked about this, but did we decide on whether we were gonna kind of go, uh, put a portion on electric and a portion on gas because not everybody used the same?
Well, this is why he listed all the different.
Yeah. This is accounting for, yeah, there's fees on both franchises. The, you won't have very good luck in saying, well, we're not gonna do gas accounts, we're only gonna do electric, because that creates a market advantage for gas to be more popular for services.
Yep.
Whether that actually comes to fruition or not, Center Point will say that it will.
No, I'm just trying to understand both sides of the argument. One argument, yes, you're right, uh, you know, it it you you are creating that advantage for, uh, the gas versus the electric, but the other side is those people that like either fully cap like that.
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be some outliers where it's not entirely equitable, but it's no different than some people don't pay street assessments because they live on a county road.
Yep.
Some of those type.
But this was the best way for us to, uh, recoup and get everybody, or at least we'll get a fourth of the. Right. Because I'm sure there's, some people that maybe still have propane, right, and we're not gonna. And sometimes you can't pick too, depending on your builder, if you get gas or electric with appliances.
Right.
Right. So you just can't.
So this way, this way it's fair.
Yes, right. Because, because we're not basing it on usage, we're just basing it on a customer.
Right, yes, right.
So, uh, I brought up the cash flow model, and I've added in different rows and columns for this model versus the one that you saw ten minutes ago.
Yes.
So the the things that have changed, I put in color. Uh, so I'm adding in residential and commercial revenue generation. And then, as I mentioned, there's growth right under there, uh, which I should have also highlighted blue. But, you know, by the time you get ten years out, that revenue growth is an additional eighty-six thousand dollars, you know, with a conservative estimate on on growth. So that number is is significant if you're looking out ten years. The other number I wanted to highlight was the the green number, which is, you know, a pretty conservative approach to reducing the property tax levy in that fund. So instead of one point five five million in twenty thirty-one, we'd be maintaining at the same tax levy that we have in place going into twenty twenty-two.
And we still have plenty of cash.
Well, yeah, and like I said, it's conservative because there's still six million dollars more than the other model. So you have the ability to be really flexible, and you could consider even a a lower fee schedule, or you could really even cut back more on that tax levy, use that for other projects that we know are coming up, like buildings.
Yeah.
Land and fire trucks and.
I like that.
I do too.
I think.
But at the same time.
I I think keep it re, being able to reduce it, but using that levy money in others.
So would it be?
All the big. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
With all the big projects we have going on, like we were talking about at the last council meeting, it's like, you know, with the, uh, what they're working, fire station. City Hall, Public Works.
And a lot's coming at us, so this is, and I do think that residents, this kind of puts that, you know, your taxing is double. This puts that to bed if you say, no, we actually are, we maintained it at the level of twenty twenty-one.
We we weren't doing what, uh, all the other cities around us, so we're. Start doing apples to apples. So I, is there information or questions that you have that you would like Nick to come out? I mean, I think we're.
You're doing a great job. This is making sense and.
Yes, yeah.
So here's a timeline that in order for this to be active by January first, the council needs to approve it by the end of September. That means from now until then, putting a a fee schedule in the franchise agreements and sending it over to each of those utilities and negotiating with them to get those agreements to the point where the city council can adopt them at the end of September.
And just to confirm, you said four dollars is the same, that's what I'm asking, because I want to.
Yep, and.
Um, is the same as Elk River and Rogers.
And Nick shared a, uh.
Apples to apples.
Nick shared a schedule of franchise fee, um, across the metro area.
Okay.
So I I could review that at a future meeting.
If you could, I think that would be helpful that we also have that out for the public to see that, or that it's in the minute somewhere that we can.
Is there a thing where that's maybe a lot?
Yeah, but from Septem, you know, if the council chooses to do this, from September to December, then uh, staff would work on creating, uh, some public.
Awareness.
Awareness, uh, franchise fee tab on the website. Go here, here's some questions, here's some illustrations, here's some mathematics as to why the city did it. Here's what your impact is, here's what your impact would have been without it.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
I think residents appreciate just the transparency part about it and being able to see it and then also reach out to you if they have questions, but giving that tax, personal tax impact statement, you know, doing that house that's to two hundred and fifty thousand, or use the break even law, whatever you need to do to make that visible for them to show what their impact would have been on the tax.
So do you?
I don't, I don't personally need Nick to come out. I think that you've provided us, you've done a really good job.
So if I show you something comparing our fee schedule to surrounding cities and our neighboring cities, that would be enough to.
Yes, 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 yes.
And you've done that, then.
You've done that.
Few years. It's easy on the residential, I think, on the commercials where it gets, you know, you'll want to see those numbers too.
Yes, I would. That's, those are the pieces I would be looking for. You don't need to get Nick here.
Just to be clear, at the end of September, we need to have a policy that you approve? Or we need a dollar amount that we approve, or the dollar amount?
What the council.
Policy, and then we can kind of, you know, whether it's four or five bucks.
What the council would be approving is a franchise ordinance.
Yeah.
And specific franchise fee agreements with each of the providers. And in those agreements and in that ordinance, we would include the fee schedule.
And so if it's. Would be negotiated after September, we'd basically be giving them the agreement that.
The agreements are all but ready.
Yeah.
The providers don't want to see them until they have the numbers in there as to what's gonna actually be going on the bills, so, okay.
Makes sense.
Once I get that in front of you and you say, yes, that looks good compared to other cities, then Dave and Shane has actually been doing a lot of that work, um, with the providers, then we can get them cleaned up, send them, get feedback from and then bring them to the council for review and approval before they. Okay. Makes sense.
Yep.
Good job, Adams.
All right.
One thing almost off the to-do list, right?
I can't wait.
This has been a long time.
Well, I started in two thousand fifteen, so probably since about two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, we would talk about it, shelf it, talk about it.
All right, here's the fund balance transfer, uh, number that I would propose to you is two point four three million, a pretty significant number. Of that, I would say there's a number that's a direct result of the CARES Act money, and that's six hundred and sixteen thousand. So you could look at using that in a slightly different way, or just put it in the capital improvement fund and have it be.
Know that we can transfer it out.
Unrestricted for any future use.
That's not on here, is it, Adam?
No, no, I just have it as a note here on my paper.
Can you repeat that number one more time?
It'd be about six hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay.
Of that two point four is related to CARES Act money. Council pledged that to public safety costs that were already budgeted for, so there wasn't the, there's a budget surplus there.
And it's probably best to put it into that account versus just pulling it over to fire at this point, just so that we can move things around if something may come up. Because if we move it to the fire fund, then we can't.
Then we can't, yeah.
So other than trails, I wouldn't maybe recommend doing anything other than just putting it into that capital improvement. So I can get a number later this year as to what makes sense to transfer to the trail management and then put the rest in the unrestricted capital improvement. And then as you're talking about public works or fire or city hall, you could look at using it for some of those purposes as well.
I would agree with that. Makes most sense, gives us the most flexibility. All the same money, just to write in different spots.
I wrote that word down a lot.
Flexibility.
I'm gonna. So last page, um, just to highlight what we've reviewed so far. Uh, the number in the center column, other than the one point zero four one nine. uh, other than the one point zero four one number, we, we've looked at all of those, uh, tonight. So we looked at pavement management, trails, parks capital, fleet vehicles, fire reserve. Thirty six thousand was, I think. Okay, so that's stormwater, we didn't review that one yet, but there's a, the city's been levying a certain dollar amount into the stormwater fund to account for certain properties in the city that were platted before MPCA put in stormwater requirements. So it's kind of that little bit of funding goes to offset those people that aren't paying through their utility bills. At some point, we could probably go away with doing that model, the, the.
How would we collect for them though then?
The problem is that some of the people are paying twice on their property tax.
Okay.
So we're not only, we're not just taxing the people that don't pay on their utility bills, we're taxing everybody, and then people are also paying on their utility bills, so. The stormwater requirements for those properties is, you know, very minimal compared to neighborhoods that have culverts and drains and ponds.
It's kind of goes to like burn hideous neighborhood, anybody knows where burning stuff, it was that.
Depending on when it was platted, it was like nineteen ninety one, I think, is when the cutoff was, so. So. Um, and then we've talked about the building and property maintenance number of thirty thousand. At the last meeting, we talked about the debt service number, five hundred and forty seven thousand, that's what we reviewed at the meeting on June fourteen. And then tonight, we talked about the tax abatement levy of forty thousand, again tying to Coburn's and, uh, the grand B, Perk B Grand Apartments. So we'll get into the general fund later in August, once we start going through the detail of that budget, what that number is. Hopefully it's somewhere around five percent. I can tell you that I already have a feeling it might be more than that based on what I've seen for public safety increases. But we'll let the numbers play out and we'll review that in August.
When you, uh, have on here the, we just said this, but I was, uh, just relooking at the numbers. When it goes to the yellow portion, the man, uh, maintained tax rate, obviously the, the biggest increase is the capital improvements, uh, going from the five forty, five hundred and forty three thousand to the forty one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll show you where that number comes from, Tom, so. I showed it a little bit different on this model, so this is taking and all those ten year cash flow, big sheets with numbers on that you look at, taking all of it from there, putting it in one spot to show what uh, the tax levy could look like in ten years, so that you can visualize and see where there's opportunities to issue debt or to increase funding for something else. And so, right here, this, uh, tax rate management, flexibility, whatever you wanna call it, that if the city council were desired to keep the tax rate exactly the same as last year, based on the information we know at this time, there's flexibility amount of a million dollars, a four, million forty one thousand. And for every year, for the next ten years, there's a similar slash growing amount. But if you wanted to manage that tax rate at this level it is today, assuming modest growth of four percent each year in the tax base, that's very easy, very manageable to do as long as everything else kind of stays where it's at.
Yeah, so it, when I'm looking up at the series, it's like, uh, two ten B, and that four hundred and sixty thousand is falling off. But then the capital improvements is going from, uh, last year, six hundred and sixty one thousand to one million forty one thousand. My question is, is it supposed to be one million forty one thousand above the six hundred and sixty one thousand, or is it supposed to be, you know, essentially the, the, the four hundred?
So.
Less than four hundred thousand above six hundred and sixty one thousand.
So last year, Tom, that six sixty one is kind of like the ten forty one of this year. So that's six sixty one. Uh, council was still able to decrease the tax rate, uh, a little bit due to all the growth.
Yeah.
And you levied that six hundred and sixty one into that capital improvement fund for some of the county road projects that were going on to pay for those.
Although.
Okay, so that, that's that capital improvement line item.
It is, it's just not.
Even though it doesn't go down to the flexibility, uh, we've zeroed it out in twenty twenty two.
I like doing it this way better because it doesn't seem like I'm saying that you need to levy that money there.
Yep.
Saying that you could levy that money there for some of the reasons that we've talked about, fire, city hall, public works.
No, no, that makes sense, I was just trying to understand, uh, the numbers, you know, where they were.
So even though there's no debt service for those projects, that you could say that we're using it for that.
Okay.
And start levying it, putting it in a fund.
I would definitely not recommend that you don't levy something because you're.
You can always reduce it and can add.
Well, the, yes, so the, the preliminary levy.
No, that's always been the issue, and, and it's like when you have, you know, these water. Have, uh, you know, like, uh, public works. Whether you're at city hall, whether you're trying to build campus, whether you can build fire station, whether you build, uh, police stations somewhere someday, or just like.
It's.
It's always hard to go down.
Yes.
Or.
And if we went down and they both, and then have a huge up, then they're gonna say.
Just like, uh, just like Rick Tony did a couple of years ago, where they, you know, it's like, oh, we maintain such a really lean budget, and then it's like, but we need to do all these things, and all of a sudden it was just like boom, and it just like, smack the taxpayers.
Right.
What did the city do? It's like.
Right, but. Yeah, and the, and the county needed to do those improvements.
They did.
They had ramps so low. Right.
So, I mean, it's kind of showing you that, okay, here's the bare bones that the council could get by with levying this to fund all of its capital improvement projects. The general fund, or at least our best estimate right now, our current debt issues. And then you've got some flexibility to say, we wanna set some money aside for the future, or identify new things that you want to do with that. Uh, just showing you what's out there. If, if you didn't increase that, uh, for example, if you levied the exact same amount in total that you did this year, the tax rate would go down by, you know, over two full points, which is extremely, you know, it's a six percent decrease, um, in the tax rate, which would be.
I would sit there and say the same, and be able to position where we do.
And maintain, yes, and maintain thirty four percent.
Structure our debt.
Yes.
Probably want to be in a good position.
We've, and I will say, the council has always done a good job of that, like, we have never overbought things, I mean. And also, you guys raise your taxes to, I, no, actually, we don't, like, we were trying to be, here it is, so, people just don't understand it.
And this doesn't even account for the, the potential reduction over that ten year period that we've looked at, which I'd be slow to implement, just do it a little bit, a little bit. That's all I have for you tonight, unless there's questions.
Well, it's a good thing we have the numbers guy.
I have, I have one question, just a comment probably just to go back to Jerry's stuff. Um, Jerry, that was here, he looked up and smiled at me, that's nice. So he talked about, you know, the contracts, his big comment was, well, we can go in and negotiate contracts, and I'm thinking, but that's gonna cost us more too, so like, they're not just gonna say, we'll do it free. What is, what are your conversations with, and I didn't wanna bring it up with him here, or maybe to get that with it, but what have your conversations been with them, like, and it's been like, well, just, we're gonna do it this way. And I get it that we're in the driver's seat, but they could tell us to take a hike.
Yeah, we haven't really gone down the path of.
Okay. I just wanna be fairly careful, like, when he, I, you need to be at these meetings.
The biggest reason for meeting tonight was to try and get the council to lay out where exactly you want us to start. Because we could have went down five different rabbit holes, brought you something back, and could have said it all crap. So, there was enough to worry about between emergency management, fire, those two topics alone, that we need a direction on that.
Okay.
And then, if you're talking fires, are we talking about blowing it all up and just driving headstrong towards a, a station in our own department, or are we saying we want a station and we wanna evaluate three options to have a station? We haven't gone down any.
Okay, I just, I mean, tonight when he was talking, it was very much like, we need to, you know, it was like, and we're all kind of like contract thing, and it seemed like at first he was kind of pushing that, and then it was, okay, what do you guys want? And so I, I wanted to know what you two had talked about.
I think he was just trying to give ideas as to.
Okay.
Ways that you can, and, you know, he was tying it back to the study that was done in twenty eighteen, that, you know, renegotiating fire con- contract, well, here's an example of how you can do that.
Right.
Obviously, it's a risk.
Right, well, and, but, but in twenty eighteen, the renegotiating fire contracts was to get us on the same schedule, that was, you know, how Robert had presented it, it was about that our, our sunsets are all at different times, and we wanted them to be, you know, every year or every two years, but always on the same time.
So it's a good time to bring this up, um, Elk River has, uh, given notice that they intend to change their.
Contract.
Contract calculation or towards the Albertville model.
Which, which we knew that would happen, and they've seen it for years.
But I haven't gotten, I've done my own calculations as to what that would look like based off their current budget, and it would be costly increase.
Yes.
Year over year. Now going forward, that number will only grow to the extent that, uh, their budget grows, or that our tax capacity would be a certain percentage. It's more than you think, it would be at Seago paying, I think it was twenty seven, thirty two percent, I forget the number.
For Elk River.
If we went to that model, including Big Lake Township, which they also provide coverage to, it would be at twenty, you know, right around the thirty percent. When you look at paying fifty percent of one budget and thirty percent of another budget, I was surprised to see that it would be, that's.
Yeah, well, and, like we've said, I mean, once we started doing the fire study and all those chiefs sat in there and realized there was the information and here's how they all charge, I think that's been our concern, is that Elk River would start charging more.
Along with that.
I mean, right, I mean, that's.
Along with that, there's been.
Good thing this is a workshop, so I just minutes, yeah, it's not recording it. I mean, it's recording it, but she's gonna listen to it. This does not make it in the.
Cause I hear, the only thing I kept thinking is like, are you breaking all this down?
No, I know, I'm just like, this is a workshop, so workshops are very general.
There's that Gateway North Industrial Park that.
That we kept in Elk River because of that.
Whether that's better to go one way or the other.
So for the new council members, we kept with, according to the new map, when we did the fire study and the rebounderies, it should have went to.
It should have went to Rogers.
But Rogers rates was high. It was almost thirty thousand dollars difference, so we kept it in Elk River because we're like, they have sprinkler systems and Elk River is cheaper, so we kept that little sliver in it. Right. So.
Now we're catching on.
Right, and they all charge different, like, like Adam said, some are tax capacity, some are valuation, some are just a flat fee. So Elk River, we paid the least amount, and they use, they have a fairly large portion, but that also then helps us to be able to collect the fees from the taxpayers, so then put it into the fire reserves, so we can eventually build a fire station.
It'd be interesting, if, if that's what Elk River's gonna do for their city, or is that just what they're gonna charge?
Uh, that's what they, I, again, I haven't seen a formal document, this is a conversation.
Is this with Mark or with Cal?
Mark. Uh, I asked if they were changing their fire contracts for their other areas that they provide service to, being.
They do Big Lake and.
Uh, Big Lake Township.
Big Lake Township in O'Rock.
I, I didn't get a straight answer, I don't know if their contract's up for renewal.
They probably won't.
Again, it, it.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's really out of our control, they can charge their other contract however they want. But if they're going to charge us that way, I, I at least want the Big Lake financial debt or the tax capacity deducted.
Yes, right, I agree.
And the, the term of the contracts aligned with Albertville, to me, doesn't necessarily matter, all of them are severable after certain notice, so.
Sure.
I, I don't think saying, oh, we're only gonna renew for one year because Albertville's at the same time, well, we can cancel any contract after certain notice, so it doesn't really matter.
And I think the only reason that came up in the study was just that it, as the city administrator, spending a lot of time on these contracts, so to, to not be always doing a contract was the thought process, but I believe.
And they are just slightly different from each other, but if, if we're bringing the funding calculation, the contract calculation to the fund, it's really helpful.
I do think it's interesting, just, uh, for the other, Jerry was talking when I got here with Adam, and just, you know, and he is going line by line through these, and, and so I think it's good to have someone who's in the industry looking at it, because, again, we're the students of this, and when they present us with a contract, we just wanna make sure a red truck shows up and puts a fire up for our residents.
Right.
We don't know the nitty gritty, so I think with him having the teeth and the experience to know, to say, you know, this is not really making sense. And I think that'll be a little helpful, but.
So do you guys know, Jerry, you took three?
Yes. We, he gave the big, yeah. But I also think that was kind of his point, unless I'm misunderstanding, but when he's like, at Seago can have their own contract, meaning, yes, it's gonna cost us, but basically what they have to do for us, since we're paying, instead of just having this big red truck show up, like, I think that's kind of what, I think that's when his point was.
And, and I, and I.